Okay, so yeah, this meeting will be recorded and it will be a more open format meeting, so kindly mute yourself if you are not speaking and there is going to be a very interactive component as part of this meeting, so I invite you all to participate and join in that. You are welcome to use the virtual background that Petra and I have. I've shared the link on the chat and for the benefit of those who join now, I'll share it again. You can use the background if you would like. So to introduce and welcome all of you, I invite Professor Madhukai, who's the Associate Director at the Maker International TV Center and the Chair of the Global PPM Working Group, to say a few words and welcome to gathering.
Thank you, Joel. Thanks Petra. So nice to see all of you. We did meet in Nairobi not long ago. And that was one of our first big TB PPM meetings since Jakarta in person. So I guess some of the big takeaways for me from that meeting was that the general gloom around too bad TB reports and how much we've fallen behind is, I think, weighing heavily on all of us. And, and at the same time, there is a UNHLM repeat meeting planned for next year. And we're all thinking hard about how to get TB back on the agenda, how to advocate for adequate resources for TB. And PPM is obviously just one component of a bigger TB response. The other big uncertainties are how does TB find a place in this whole pandemic preparedness agenda and all the negotiations that are currently happening? What has happened to the UHC agenda? And how, how much has it kind of fallen behind with all the emphasis on pandemics? These are all some really big unknown issues as we kind of prepare for the UNHLM meeting next summer and fall. So it's good to kind of get together and brainstorm, which is what I think this town hall is really about. There are a few interesting campaigns such as the 146 by 24 campaign that we could all promote and make sure private sector has access to the best possible tools, especially the shot regimens we have. WHO will soon be coming out with a, with a programmatic roadmap on WHO recommended rapid tests as the path forward for us. So even that needs to be accessible to the private providers everywhere and privately managed patients everywhere. So there's a lot of work to do in addition to advocacy, the, you know, just promoting the best tools we have today would have a massive impact on, on how we see this. So with that introduction, I welcome all of you and thank you for all your contributions to TP PPM and hand you back to Petra.
Thank you, Madhu. Really appreciate you introducing the meeting and being part of it. So what we would like to do to, to start off the meeting is to bring in some of the voices from the ground, some of the voices from communities, some of the voices from people who have actually struggled with TB. And I'm really happy to introduce Priyanka Iyer, who is part of the Global Coalition of TB Activists and works closely with Blassi Kumar. And Priyanka has worked hard on a beautiful product that was shown at the Union Conference Meeting. And I'm really happy that she's going to introduce it and we will show it here because there is some important messages that I think we should broadcast widely and repeat many times. So Priyanka, if you want to say a few words, please go ahead. Thank you for joining.
Thank you very much, Petra. Just before I share the video, I just want to say that this has been a community effort through and through. We did not have any funds or any support that was coming in, but as you know, creating a film like that, that is talking about the stakeholders on a global level, us community members at a global level coming together to do this video in our eyes is a big feat. And it is a labor of love and a lot of effort has gone into it to bring all of these voices together from across the globe and present our demands. So with this, I just want to share the video and I hope we are all able to see it now. Here goes.
Nous devons nous battre pour gagner le terrain perdu à cause du COVID-19. Nous devons veiller à ce que les gens aient accès à des traitements anti-tuberculeux décentralisés, à des services de conseil et à des formations. Et tout cela doit être renforcé par des plans d'action nascent, qui feront des CRG de la tuberculose et un axe multisectoriale engagé.
La carence à la TB est une des voies qui nous a amenées dans le monde entier. Tous les pays ont besoin d'un accès à la TPT et à la augmentation de la capacité d'être qualifié. Nous avons besoin d'un respirateur N95 pour tous les problèmes de maladie.
There is no space for data diagnostics anymore. Early diagnosis saves lives. We need an equitable, accessible and operational TB vaccine now.
Si les jeunes ont des traitements supplémentaires, pourquoi sont-ils en train de se mettre en charge? Nous devons guérir les douleurs et les faibles d'âme, et il est très important de prendre des traitements plus rapides.
Quand nous sommes arrivés, nous avons eu des problèmes, nous avons eu des troubles, nous avons eu des difficultés, nous avons eu des difficultés. Nous avons eu des difficultés, nous avons eu des problèmes, nous avons eu des difficultés. Nous avons eu des difficultés, nous avons eu des difficultés.
Mettez votre argent où est notre voix. Nous ne pouvons pas finir la tuberculose sans financer les communautés qui font cet activisme. Les communautés sont mieux préparées pour donner une réponse et un soutien à la pandémie de la tuberculose. Nos voix sont d'importance extrême. Nous devons nous financer pour que nous puissions faire ces travaux d'importance extrême.
Nous sommes approfondis des forces établies lors de la réunion de haut niveau en 2018. Toutes les pays doivent participer à des réunions de haut niveau en 2023 et se soucier de leur responsabilité de donner plus de ressources financières pour la distribution de la tuberculose. Enfin, nous ne pouvons pas arrêter avec la tuberculose sans arrêter avec la stigmation et la discrimination. Et sans garantir l'assurance de la relation avec les villes. Rien.
Il n'y a rien.
Il y a besoin de peur.
Nothing about us without us.
Thank you so much, Priyanka, and thank you, GCTA team, that definitely set the scene and shows why it is important, whatever we are doing. So thank you for all those were in that video, sharing and advocating for all these points that we need to focus on TB. Next, we move on to the interactive session of the meeting where we have an amazing set of panelists who are very active on the TB PPM Learning Network, either within the website or outside of it. So during the session, we also have a few questions for the audience. So be ready to answer those questions. These questions will be posted on the whiteboard and the audience are welcome to type in the response. To moderate the session, I invite our community manager Petra Edkamp to moderate the session.
Thank you. Thank you, Joel, and thanks, everyone. I'm really happy that we have some excellent community members that have stepped up to say a few words. And as Joel mentioned, we would love to hear from everyone. But on our panel today, we, we have the following people who will be joining us to look into some of the details specifically. It's Gulibe Uchukwu from the Nigeria KNCV. He is a senior program officer there. Then Michael Macharia, who is a technical advisor for TB Service Delivery in Kumeisha TB in Kenya. Rabia Bates, who is the head of M&amp;E in TB and Business Development at Seshepda Kamaha in Tanzania. Then Aditya Vikaksono, who is the TB PPM advisor for the National TB Program in Indonesia. Mohammed Yasin, who is the senior TB advisor in Global Fund. Then Punithi Swar, who is the M&amp;E associate at the Reach the Resource Group in India, in Chennai. I'm super happy that all of you have agreed to say a few words and really express some of the key points of what was happening in 2022. And to make this a bit of an interactive session, what we would like to do is to ask some specific questions to some of the community members and then pause at certain times to hear from each of you who is joining our meeting today around the similar questions. So the first question is talking about achievements in 2022. And I would like to start with Gulibe. Gulibe, could you outline to us in a few messages, what are some of the key achievements in 2022 on PPM in Nigeria, in the work that you do in KNCV? And especially it would be interesting to hear a practical experience that other countries could also possibly look into. I'm handing over to you, Gulibe. Please go ahead.
Okay. Good day, everyone. Sorry, I just had to step out because I was actually in training now. So basically, I would say for the PPM intervention in Nigeria, it's been challenging, but I think there are one or two major good things we have from the PPM have been the increment in terms of contribution to case finding. PPM really kicked off probably, I would say, 2014. But in the past two, three years, the level of importance it has gained in Nigeria has drastically improved. Because in line with the increased notification and case finding that we had in Nigeria, PPM has gone along with the contribution a lot to. Now, also, I also wanted to add that from 2020, the last time we took our, you know, from 2018, the contribution of PPM nationwide was about 12% to case finding, but currently, after the last data in 2021, which is last year, I had to get that. It currently stays at 25%, so that is twice the amount of contribution. And it has been because of current regular engagement. There have also been PPM expansion, an increase in the number of PPM sites engaged. There has been a high increase in the number of PPM sites engaged. In addition to that, increasing the number of PPM sites engaged. The PPM have also been engaged in terms of community. Now, when we talk about PPM, the model we have used in Nigeria is a model of hub and spool. We have the hub sites, the hub sites are the hospitals. But we have the spoke side that are linked to those upside in line with identification and referral of presumptive TB cases and all that. There's also incentive in the PPM vector, but the spoke site are like the main driver. The hub is there, they also get cases and they are high bodied private sector site. But the spoke sites are way more than the hubs in numbers. And they are the ones to let the community, they have organized a lot of community outreach and community-based interventions through this site. Generating presunto is I'm moving them to the hub. So they have gone a long way to go ahead to boost the BCA notification and to increase the number of, decrease the contribution of the private sector to case finding. Of course, the incentives are still there and PPM, like we all know, is incentive driven because the private sector is the profit base of that. It has gone a long way to improve and then it has gone a long way to, essentially, it has gone a long way to drive. So I think those are the little secrets. Of course, currently, there is still another part I also like to include is in the PPM, we can't forget the engagement of the standalone labs. The engagement of the standalone lab hasn't just been purely for identification or referral of presumptive. They have been engaged for diagnosis. Right now, one of the things that the TB program has done has been to cite diagnostic centers and sometimes even one or two reference lab in the private standalone lab, making them. So in Imo State where I am recently engaged a diagnostic center to cite a gene expert site, and we are considering engaging it for TB lamp and other alternative diagnostic platform. So this thing has gone along with because these are high-bodied labs that a lot of people go to every day. So by doing that, okay, they are not, they are giving them a sense of ownership, a sense of belonging, and they know they are part of it and they are committed to supporting the TB program to achieve its goals in tuberculosis control. So I think those are the two major things that we have done. Then in terms of challenges, of course, they still need to expand more, to expand to more private businesses, to engage them more, there are still a lot of issues. One of the issues is a lot of private sector still complaining about the funding not being enough, the incentives not being enough. Even manpower. We have staff attrition in the private sector. We have the fact that some of them find it difficult to dedicate manpower and because of the staff attrition, they need to trade and retrain. Sometimes we have gone to hospitals where we require them to dedicate specific manpower to that the TB programs in that facility. They agree, but then the person now leaves and to get a new person has been challenging. So I would say manpower is still a problem there. Some of them still feel the need to increase the incentive, that incentives used to be good, but they are no more good enough in light of inflation and the increased cost of running for business. Also, they even need to enter the rural area because Nigeria is a large country. And then we still have a lot of, a lot, a lot of Nigeria that is still not covered with dots. And they are quite interior, so we need to engage facilities, private facilities and ensure that they can provide, even if it's not dot services, but TB screening, identification and referral and maybe diagnostic services. So those are the major challenges. Of course, in addition, on the part of the national program, I think another thing that has also boosted clinical diagnosis. Clinical diagnosis has gone a long way, has increased. I will say that clinical diagnosis has also, even in the private sector, it's one of the reasons why the private sector has more. clinicians are well, are more aware that the fact that they can actually diagnose TB clinically, using chest X-ray or even the clinical signs and symptoms. And because of that, they are using that, they have the high index of the patient and they are even need to diagnose more TB cases outside gene expert, utilizing chest X-ray and then their clinical accuracy. So I think that was just in summary.
Thank you. Thank you, Gulibe. Yes, I, I mean Nigeria has made incredible progress and some of the practical things you talk about, the hub and spoke model, the labs are definitely contributing to that rapid progress. And it's great to see also that with the Global Fund's support, that there are resources available to be those connection linkages with, with those organizations. So wonderful. Thank you for sharing that and also to hear about the challenges. And I think some of the challenges you talk about, such as the rural areas, I'm really happy to actually link now to Michael from Kenya and hear a little bit about Michael, Michael Nairobi and Kenya. We have seen some of the wonderful progress for those of us who were able to come to the PPM Working Group meeting. And you did a wonderful job in hosting the global community. So can you tell us a little bit more of a similar question? In 2022, when you look at engaging the faith-based organizations in Kenya, what do you see as one of the key achievements from your point of view? Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you, Petra. So for us in Kenya, the one thing from a program perspective, if I take commercial TB, is USID-supported program, which is being implemented by the Kenya Conference of Catholic bishops. And our implementation is in nine counties in Western Kenya. And what you look at is engagement of public, private and faith-based facilities. For this, we have around 140 health facilities that we're engaging. One of the things that has come out of this is engagement of non-health stakeholders. And in this case, we are looking at clergy, both Christian, Muslim, Hindu in terms of TB implementation. We've been able to have advocacy and engagement through various media houses, especially those ones that are actually Islamic for purposes of TB work and engagement and have, and creating awareness for TB in the communities where we serve. On the other hand, through internal collaboration with one of the commissions within the Catholic Security Authority, that is the Education Commission, we've been able to train at least 77 or so teachers in relation to TB schools. And we are also partnering with the national government in development of the school health policy for TB, for learning institutions. And this brings about collaborators both in the faith, private and public, as well as government and counties for purposes of developing that policy that will guide how we engage in terms of TB screening, active case finding, as well as a treatment in supporting learners in our schools. That being said, being from a community perspective, we've been able to engage community help volunteers and we've trained quite a significant number, around 140 or so. And you're also looking at in terms of community TB engagements. Then from a healthcare worker perspective, we've been able to engage our healthcare workers in various trainings for purposes of improving case finding in the health facility and also in terms of being able to provide TB preventive therapy and also improving diagnostics. I think for one, for us, the, the one thing that has, the government has been able to facilitate through the National TB Program is the implementation of what you call INTP. And these are innovative diagnostic approaches where we are looking at computerized, computer aided digital X-ray as well as TPT, TB preventive therapy in the communities where we support and newer diagnostic tools like the Truenut. And this being a pilot phase in 10 counties, we are fortunate to have one placed in one of the faith-based facilities that we support and be able to network with other public facilities as well as private facilities. And that has really improved case finding. I know for the last time was in that facility, the workload in terms for that machine had truly improved from 30 tests in a given month to almost like 250. And that says there's actually quite significant demand. And one of the things that I know that will come out of this is an increased number of those machines being put in our facilities. And I know nationally as well, we have a very cohesive and vibrant volunteer of experts that facilitates TB PPM implementation in our country, which is a plus for our nation. And that has really helped implementing the new PPM action plan that began implementation for the 2021, 2023 phase of PPM. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You are absolutely right. It was, it was the, the wide range of engagement of the faith-based organizations is, was fantastic to see, to have those new diagnostics available in the hospital that I visited. There was a large board in terms of all the tests that are being done, including the details of how much time it will take to get the test result back. And it was fantastic to see that the government had facilitated that these equipment was available for anyone who was joining. So thank you for, thank you so much for that. I would like to now go to, as a, before we move on to hear from everyone, I'm gonna just ask Mohamed from the Global Fund and maybe hear from, from Mohamed's point of view, what has been in 2022, an achievement? We know, we all know, and many of us have been busy in supporting the Global Fund replenishment. We would like to hear a few words from you about how the replenishment has gone and what are priorities for PPM in 2023? And if we look ahead and what is the, how can a TB PPM Learning Network support in, in the efforts that the Global Fund is doing? So that we get the message out. So Mohamed, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thanks, thanks Petra. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, colleagues. Thanks for the opportunity. Yes, it's, it's really a great year, 2022 for Global Fund and thank you and your colleagues, your team for advocating for Global Fund replenishment. And we are happy that we finally are able to raise 15.7 billion dollars for the next three years. That is the largest ever Global Fund has raised for replenishment for three years. Of course, we requested for 18 billion, but given the current context, I think that is really a great success. And we all look forward to work with all the countries. After that Texas replenishment, the next step is on allocation of the funding to countries and all the background exercise already done and the countries will receive allocation letters with the amount, the focus areas for, for the next three years, in the next week or so. So we, all the countries are, I understand, preparing for the next funding request. The first window will be next March and then there'll be another in, in May. So this would be an opportunity to really invest on private sector and expand and scale up innovative models in, in implementing private sector engagement. As there are opportunities within the Global Fund, including the Global Fund Neo Strategy, which advocates for people-centered integrated approach, including engaging all providers, including private providers and communities. This is an opportunity. And then as, as part of the preparation for, for the next funding cycle and the tools and guidance also develop already, the information, not the new modular framework where engagement of private providers in TB is highlighted as one of the priority areas. Again, as part of the, the next funding request, additional funding would be available. This would be communicated to priority countries as part of marching funding. And as the focus of this marching funding would be on finding and treating missing people with TB and drug-resistant TB. And we also understand most of those missing people are probably going to private sector. So engaging private sector would be another priority area for the next funding request. While that is for the next funding request, the other opportunities and experience in 2022 was a recovery from the disruption from COVID that we have seen in several of the countries, including the ones already highlighted here. And the private sector contributed to quick recovery in some of the countries. Of course, continued TB notification despite COVID in Nigeria as well, where we didn't see disruption, rather the notification even more than doubled. And we understand the private sector contributes to those and other countries as well, where we have seen a quick recovery. Actually, the contribution of private sector contributed overall led to those, to those quick recoveries. I think those are the good examples and good reasons for all of us to advocate for, for investment and private sector engagement. And we have done an analysis on Global Fund investment in 11 countries, which account to over 65% of Global Fund TB portfolio. You have seen that also these countries contributed to about 18% of the TB notification at the national level. The, the overall funding for private sector engagement was about 11%. That's, we understand others could also contribute to funding for private sector. But within the Global Fund, that's the gap we see and we believe that there should be focus on putting budget for, for private sector engagement, a scale up of innovative interventions and access to the diagnostic and treatment service for patients wherever they get service, whether it's a public or private, and that access should be improved. And we encourage countries to explore options within the existing grant and the savings and reprogramming, including investment through the C19 to accelerate private sector engagement while preparing for the next funding cycle, which would be a great opportunity. We all look forward to work with all of you to support countries while they are developing their funding requests and accelerating the implementation of the current grant as well. Thank you very much. Over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mohamed. And so I, I think, community members, everyone who's here, you've heard the call. There is support from the Global Fund for your initiatives on the ground in PPM and in different ways. So please start creatively thinking about expansion and scaling up of your programs and work with the CCMs at the country level to put proposals together and with Global Fund counterparts. On our end, we will make sure that all the information that Mohamed has just given out will also come on the Learning Network and will be available to everyone. So please reach out if you're looking for anything. Mohamed, thank you so much. Now, before we go to our next panel members, and Mohamed, I realize you might need to drop off for another meeting. So please feel free to drop out. Thank you for joining us. Before we go to Aditya and to Rabia and to Punita Swar, I would like to invite everyone in the community to say a few words on our whiteboard. We're going to pull up a whiteboard right now and we would like to hear from you. And this is a platform where we would like to share. So use the icon. If you see the little T on the sidebar here, I'm, if you click on the T, please, or you can click on the sticky note if you want. Why don't you share a few things from your country, what you think really has been a success or what is a good achievement? And that can include a, a, a problem that you solved in twenty twenty-one. But we would like to hear from different people about what your achievements are in, in PPM in twenty twenty-two. Have you started a new project, started a new partnership? What are some of the things that you would like to share with the community as something where people can also find you later on? So we're watching Joel's screen and I see some sticky notes being popped up and see some names joining in there. So I'm hoping that we're starting to see some text pop up too. This is the first time that we're doing this. So I think it might be for everyone a minute to figure it out, but please take a moment. We're taking about two minutes, three minutes for this. And if you feel more comfortable to write in the chat, also please feel free to write in the chat if that is something that you prefer doing. Oh, I'm starting to see things on the, on the screen. And write your name at the bottom when you're done writing, just so that we know it's from or how we can reach you, because I'm sure this is a way where different members can find other members and would be interested to hear what you're doing.
And it would be good if you could actually use the sticky note option. Like everyone, we're using sticky note, we are able to read it much clearer. So thank you for that.
And probably the text option, not the writing option, right?
Yeah, yes. Sorry, your handwriting is really amazing for an online platform. So good host on the handwriting. But if you could actually type that in a sticky note, that would be really great.
I'm, I need to put my glasses on too. You go ahead.
Yeah, this is, so to select the sticky note, just click on here and just drag it somewhere and you can type in your response.
I see that there are new projects in scaling up and cooperation within Vietnam. We have a wonderful article that we and team have written about the engagement of pharmacies. And it's, it's great to see that you're putting this in here, we, because that definitely is a model that other countries should be looking at or should reach out to you to learn more about and the engagement of pharmacies. The PPM sector has been quite promising, especially in terms of achieving pre-COVID targets and notifications and predictive modeling techniques have been used to identify hotspots. That's interesting. Can someone who wrote that, that's wonderful. Can you just share your name if you're willing to or, or the place where it is? So that we know, if, if members are interested, they can reach you. Then the successful Global Fund replenishment, where many of you have helped to advocate and show good examples from country level and the priority on TB and PPM is wonderful. I'm guessing that Mohamed put that in there. That's right. Thank you, Mohamed. Expansion of PPM engagement and a role, a rollout of TB. Okay, the TB app, the TBulite app in Kenya. Yes, that is a good example. I think that's nice. Thank you for putting that in there. Han Kotat, no problem. If you can't access the whiteboard, please feel free to use the chat. And Hiavshan, joining from Pakistan. Thank you. Service continuation, wonderful. Despite COVID troubles that you've been able to continue services, that is fantastic. Thank you all. This is great. Thank you for sharing those, those messages. So we give it a few more seconds and you can also write on the whiteboard. Joel, they have, they have access to the whiteboard even when it's not shared on the screen, right?
Yes, Petra. So you will not be able to, you don't have to click on the whiteboard to type on it. Whatever you are seeing on the screen, you can just type directly on that. So you don't have to click on the whiteboard at the bottom. You can just type on the screen directly. Just select the sticky note and enter. I see Diana is now typing a response. So Diana has mentioned laboratory consortium.
Yes, that's right. That's, that's, there's, that's an important piece of work that we've seen in India with IPACT. And Philippines has done a great job on bringing laboratories in as well. And I know that Nigeria, you Gullibi mentioned the importance of standalone labs and whereas in Philippines and in India, they've been working in a model of bringing them all in a consortium. Please look, we have some feature stories on that if you're interested to read more on that. And Nigeria has more of a hub and spokes model. So that's another point. And I'm sure that Shamim will be able to share also more on laboratory engagement for any of those that are interested in hearing more about the engagement of laboratories. Mandatory notification, that's fantastic. That's a really important tool. And thank you for putting that up here. I'm glad that that was something that worked out in twenty twenty-two. Thank you. So I, in the interest of time, I'm just going to move along to some of the other speakers that we've asked to prepare some questions. And the next question that we're looking at is more of looking towards twenty twenty-three. What are important points for twenty twenty-three in PPM? And maybe to start us off, I'm going to ask Aditya, also from Indonesia. I know it's late there. So I would like to give you an opportunity to drop out after and give you the floor. Indonesia has led the G twenty discussions this year and really has raised the profile, profile of TB in many international discussions with heads of state and important delegations. And your Minister of Health has been really dedicated to tuberculosis. And it's been really good to see. Can, can you tell us a little bit about some of the key achievements this year in Indonesia? Especially also related to the universal health coverage and what you're, what you view how that is linked to PPM? And from your point of view, what are crucial points when we look to the next year, twenty twenty-three, and specifically in Indonesia? Aditya, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thank you, Petra. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting me to this very important meeting. So it was such an honor to me to have a virtual discussion with you all related to the PPM practice around the globe. So as Petra said earlier, that I'm working as the Star PPM Advisor for NTP Indonesia. And for Indonesia, we measure the PPM achievement through, you know, several indicators. And as our NTP manager, Dr. Tiara Pakasi, said in the last PPM global meeting in Kenya, in general, we have two groups of PPM indicators to measure the PPM achievement within the country. So the first group is related to measure the coverage of health facility engagement with NTP. So we measure how many, how to, how facility engaged with the NTP and how many health facility can has the access of the WRD tests and also the TB drugs. And the second group is to measure the contribution of that healthcare facility in providing standardized TB care. So we measure how to, you know, numbers of TB cases reported from the public and private and also treatment success from public and private and also how much preventative TB tested with WRD test and also bacteria logically confirmed. And also that, that's we divided into the two types of health facility. So related to those achievement, Indonesia, so maybe from the last, because currently we are having as Mohamed said earlier, that we are having the gem mission Indonesia. And our director said that the treatment coverage Indonesia, as per this November, is like achieve sixty-one percent from the estimated target. That's the previous one, because we found the five hundred and eighteen thousand TB case this year. And the PPM achievement itself is, I think, is progressing in the right direction. Because it is proved by the TBK notification from private healthcare is increasing gradually year by year. So as, as I can see from the two thousand and twenty into now two thousand and twenty-two, the TBK notification from private hospital is increasing about like fourteen, forty percent from seventy-two thousand into the one hundred and two thousand TB cases. And from the GP clinic itself, it increased like for roughly sixty percent of TBK notifications. So from three hundred to the, sorry, from three thousand to the five thousand. So the strategy that underlying this achievement is stated, actually is stated in our national strategic plan, which is consists of six strategies of PPM. The first is to strengthen the network and coordination mechanism among all health facilities. And the second is to improve the quality of TB service itself within the health facility. And three is to strengthen the role of cross-programmes, multi-sectors and community in the PPM implementation. And the fourth is to strengthen the implementation of mandatory notification. The fourth is to strengthen the PPM through health financing. And six is to develop a link between, between private and public providers with community initiative to patient support or to loss to throw up tracing. And as Petra saying, that related to the G twenty percentage in Indonesia, yes, it is the TB became one of the side events in the first health working group in the series of G twenty meetings. And the main output of the event is the call to action on financing for TB response. So the G twenty communities, countries reaffirm the commitment to strengthen international sides and working together to ensure holistic, sustainable finance and accountable response through resource mobilization for TB care and prevention, as well as research and development as part of an effective, effective one health multi-sectoral approach and the pandemic preparedness to NTB in two thousand and thirteen. So it basically, it consists of three main actions. The first is to acknowledge the TB burden happen in the global and the importance to accelerate the NTB program. And the, and second is to encourage the G twenty countries' commitment to NTB. And the third is to gain support, leverage resource to accelerate, accelerate ending TB. So one, one of the important points that the PPM is mentioned in the summary of the call of the, the G twenty member states of our organization in the TB program. It is stated that we need to encourage public-private partnership to develop effective, affordable and rapid and easy-to-use tool for screening and diagnosing TB, also to detect, to detect drug resistance and for monitoring and treatment outcome. So it means that this is a very important document that we can discuss again in the next year. As PII say that the TB is on the UN National Agenda two thousand and twenty-three. So maybe we can push this to the next USLM agenda. And also, the last question that meant Petra saying related to, to the, our priority in two thousand and twenty-three. In my opinion, that our NTP is focusing on increasing the TBK certification itself, because we still have so many gaps in here. So we try to focus the, the TBK certification through the advocacy meetings and, you know, training with, with the unengaged health facilities. And the second is to implement, you know, we, we engage all kind of resources that we have. We have tried to engage the big chain hospital engagement to, to, to engage the management of the hospital to empower their, their members to provide standardized TB care. And the third is to optimizing the model of private lab and pharmacy engagement in TB program. Yes, I do agree that the pharmacy engagement and private labs is very important, because one of our study in two thousand and seventeen, the patient pathway studies stated that our, our, our people, like seventy-four percent prefer to go into the private sectors. And fifty-two percent of it is going to seek the, the pharmacies first before they get the TB treatment. So and then the second, our priority in the next year is to increase the quality of TB care. This is true, maybe in the national level, we, we revise the TB PPM related guidelines to make sure that all healthcare facility can provide the standardized TB care. And also, we plan to implement the performance-based payment per TB care episodes. So we try to make a reward for the health facility or the professional organization who provides standardized TB care. And the third, we try to give the TB coaching into the healthcare facility. So I think that's, that's all that our focus in the two thousand and twenty-three. I think that's all for me for now, Petra. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Aditya. You had a very rich amount of points that you're sharing from Indonesia. And I'm not even gonna try to summarize your points, but, but thank you so much for sharing there. And clearly a lot happening within Indonesia and some of the points that you outlined also for the upcoming year are, are all very important. And we really look forward to giving you some more space on, on the platform to share some of the experiences from Indonesia. So thank you. And as you all know, that this year, twenty twenty-three will be the year where there is a UN high-level meeting on TB. There's a UN high-level meeting on the universal health coverage. You see, there is a UN high-level meeting on pandemic preparedness and response. And all of those three are relevant for our programming in tuberculosis. And when you at the country level have good examples that you can feed into your national TB programs on, that will help them to strengthen their argument about investing globally into TB programs, into health programs in general, but also specifically into TB programs and into engaging the private sector. Please lock your ideas into the discussions that are happening at country level, because I think it's important that we all contribute a piece into the advocacy work that is, that is needs to happen this year in twenty twenty-three. So Aditya, you, Indonesia clearly has shown the way on how that can be done. And we look forward to India leading now the G twenty and picking up that discussion. And you will for sure hear more from WHO about that, who will be actively helping in the engagement and discussions with the UN high-level meetings. But to keep us back to the concrete work that's happening in countries and specifically looking at twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Aditya, for sharing the TB standards as one of the key points. I think that's really important in every country and especially in our work in PPM, where we want to have private providers also really access to, to the, the standards of, of tuberculosis to ensure that what they do is not any harm, but that they're actually contributing to TB in the right way. So I would like to now call on Rabia. Rabia, you have in, in Tanzania, Rabia is working specifically with one private sector group, and that's the mining population. And the work that you've done in the north of Tanzania has been really successful. And I would love to hear from you on opportunities to scale up the work that you're, you've been doing, not just maybe within Tanzania in the mining sector, but also ideas from you about taking that type of work to other countries. Rabia, do you wanna take the floor for me and just talk for a few minutes about the work on engaging the private sector in the mining population?
Yes, and thank you so much, Petra, for this opportunity. Greetings everyone and good evening, because it's now evening, Tanzania. So specifically with TB PPM in Tanzania, it's true, TB PPM is really working and private sectors, both informal, formal sectors. uh, and private sectors, both informal, formal sectors are all really uh, supportive when ensuring the delivery of TB service delivery, whether in the mining sector or in any other sectors. So now moving forward, uh, with what the country now has so far done, there is this uh, strengthening or availability or operationalization of the TB mobile van uh, in Tanzania has really been supportive, especially when it comes into reaching and finding more people with TB uh, among the mining population. Like now the country has five uh, mobile van, uh, which were supported during the implementation of TB in mining sectors. That is uh, because Tanzania is one among of the SADC country. So this has been helpful because uh, in the van, there is a, there is a lab and cooling of sputum sample is being done. But also chest X-ray is being offered. And also the genie expert, which is inside with it, has sixteen modules. So this helps and saves time among miners uh, to access the, the TB services. Thus improving access to uh, to care uh, when it comes into mining population. But also there is this engagement of uh, private health facilities to support the TB diagnosis has been supportive because the government now had to provide in some of the uh, training and also TB diagnostic resources like the cartridges, the genie expertise. So provision of that has really helped to, uh, to ensure only fellows which are being linked among miners to access TB health services at private sector, well, private health facilities has been easier. But also within the mining compound, we work with the traditional healers and the adults. These are informal, informal private sector which supports the link or supports the linkage or the enhanced linkage with communities where they can provide TB awareness, but also they do the uh, they collaborate with the community health workers to provide the TBs screening and do other referrals. Through that process also are engaging the border raiders or the sputum collectors who work within the mine, mining community to transfer. This has strengthened the issue of sputum transportation from one point to another. Thus uh, helping to increase case findings among the, the mining, mining population. But besides that, these mining companies like we have, uh, for example, we have Gator, there is Gator gold mining. So they have been supportive sometimes in providing uh, because they have been engaged. So we saw like at Gator, if a hospital, they donated the genie expertise. So that was really been uh, helpful in a way that uh, people were able to like access timely sputum to be processed, but also accessing treatment. And that's why we need to improve uh, mine workers. But also with training the mining uh, companies or people who owns the pit. So the, yeah, the pit has been helpful in a way that they reduce the issue uh, of uh, determination whenever maybe a worker is I will call it that it's really important to, to engage them. So also within the TB and mining community, there are also technical working groups whereby those working groups are representative from the mine union, some of the mine, ex-mine workers, they are also representing. So as soon as that they support the issue uh, over the vocas, but also call for more resources. My and issues of like maybe uh, timely availability of medication. Thus favoring the mining community and reaching more miners when it comes to, to TB case uh, case finding. So maybe moving forward on what we, we wish that this to scale up this activity, we need to partner with private sectors like the labor union, like as I've said, the mine workers needed to scale up to ensure that uh, uh, like maybe workplace, TB policies and initiative are really supportive to improve community outreach among this mining population. But also we need to like maybe call for more funding for proper coordination and, and the vocas are in partnership with TB affected the communities which are within uh, the, the mining communities. This will ensure accountability for fulfilling the UN HSLM for, on community and the commitments. Yeah, so I think those are some and some of the examples which is, and what do you think of now Tanzania now?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I didn't wanna cut you off, but I, I, we have very little time. And you've given some wonderful concrete examples um, on the work already. So really think this is amazing and I, I really see that the African Union is stepping up in an interest also with Auda Neput to uh, work more in many different countries. And we know that the SADC countries have mining populations as well. One of their key concerns is how to engage the artisanal small miners. And that's exactly the work that you've been doing. So anyone who is working on this area and trying to engage mining populations, please reach out to Rabia because she has a wealth of information to share on this. Um, and it's wonderful to hear some of your concrete points Rabia. So uh, thank you for that and, and sorry to cut you off, but I wanna make sure that we have our last speaker also an opportunity to say a few words. So Punita Swar, you work in, in India and um, the work that Reach is doing in Chennai is, is fantastic. A lot of integrated approaches bringing communities, uh, private sector, private providers, um, a large amount of, of collaboration in a very holistic approach. And I would like to just um, give you a little bit of similar question, like what is one of the priorities for your work in twenty twenty-three? But also maybe ask a question, what kind of collaboration is the most useful to you? When you think about what can you learn from the learning network or from colleagues globally? Give us one concrete example of something that has been useful to you. So that links into the question that I will ask the audience later. Punita Swar, please go ahead, take the floor from, from me.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, so basically, uh, I have worked with the Reach, currently I'm working in a TBL at India, uh, under latent TB program. So I can brief about on TB, uh, latent TB. So here we are working in a government and public sector uh, for starting the uh, TPT, TPT initiatives. And what we do, we do the call, the index patients, that what is the program of uh, initiating of TPT uh, for less than five and greater than five through the C, uh, so we are doing CXR uh, in a few of the geographies and there's uh, testing facility as well, like uh, ultimate testing, like EGR or uh, somewhere is TST. TST was in the past, now we are proceeding with the EGR test in uh, some geographies. Uh, based on the results, uh, either we are, uh, based on the result of CXR, it's going to be, if it goes to suggestive, then we move to uh, TB suggestive or if uh, it goes to negative, uh, in CXR, we started by TPT. But it's the fight, uh, that's, I think, all for myself, from sector.
Thank, thank you so much. That's, that's great. And preventive TB is really uh, becoming even more and more important these days. So thank you for sharing that and the work on latent TB and TPT that you're doing. And that's um, really good. So I would like to ask um, Joel, maybe to close off this um, panel discussion. Maybe we can um, open up the whiteboard one more time. And at the same time, if there's anyone who wants to, and the question is, what are key points for twenty twenty-two? And maybe also the second question, what kind of collaboration or needs do you have for twenty twenty-three? Sorry, twenty twenty-three, I'm clearly still in twenty twenty-two. I mean, what's, looking towards twenty twenty-three, what is a priority for your work? Um, if you prefer to raise your hand to say something, we will take two minutes. Um, if you prefer to use the chat, please do so too. Um, feel free to step in at this time, anyone who wants to say something, um. Joel, I think, can we go to a new page?
This is a new page, Petra.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I use, uh, so you need to click on page two if you're not able to see, but.
We, we see, I think we see the page one on the screen right now.
Are you, are you able to see what I'm typing? Or you might have to select in the bottom left, uh, click on the pages and select page two.
Do you need to scroll down?
On, see on the options on the left, you find page two. Is everybody seeing only page one or are somebody, people able to see page two?
We can only see one. We can only see page one.
If you go on the sidebar here on the side, on the left side, you can see where you can, where the sticky note is and where the T is to click text. If at the bottom, oh, I think you left the whiteboard draw.
Yeah, I started in one.
And then at the bottom, you see page one and two. And you can click in, oh, you're starting a fresh one, okay. That's not maybe easier, thank you. So what are some of the key priorities for twenty twenty-three for PPM? And what are needs that, what needs do you have for collaboration? Or what could the learning network do to, to help your work? Those types of support and needs would be good to hear. And we're using two more minutes. And again, if you wanna raise your hands, please feel free to raise your hands or use the chat. Capacity building in India, thank you Anivut. Um, priorities for twenty twenty-three, we should engage the red for TB. Yes, if anyone has connections to Bono, then we can start a red campaign, that would be fantastic. Um, stable supply chain to prevent drug stockouts, that's an important point. More community engagement, absolutely, we need to raise much more awareness about TB globally. Um, enhancement of referral mechanism between public and private sector, really important point. Establishment of an in-country learning network, thank you, that's nice. Connect refugees to stop TB Kenya and TB champions, yes. Establish TB prevention and elimination advocacy led by refugees. Many um, important points are coming up for you, for your work. And what we will be doing, we will be collating all these points as um, for our learning network and write a report just to, to offer more of a discussion document for everyone. We'll put it out in a uh, forum for people to, to look at. Enhancing the network of patient-centered support, advocate for more resources during the UN H, HLM, absolutely, political commitment and financial commitment is crucial for our work globally and at country level. Uh, strategic plan and implementation, uh, definitely linked to what Muhammad said about the global fund. We hope that everyone is gonna spend some time about, on planning and um, in the next while to see how we can get some of the funding from the global fund for PPM activities. So that is great, um, integrating it in the District of Health, the Department of Health integration. I think that's probably the Philippines, um. Lab testing. Improving government to private payments, important point, yes. Uh, TP is a notifiable disease, many excellent points. Thank you, thank you so much. This has been wonderful to see your thinking for twenty twenty-three and priorities that are coming up in um, your areas of work in your countries. Um, thank you for sharing this. I am very pleased to, to see um, your active interaction and thank you so much. So Joel, I think, uh, we closed the panel. Thank you to our wonderful panelists. Um, thanks to everyone, I'm gonna give a, a big applause to all your active engagements and hearing the many things that you're doing on PPM. It's wonderful to hear your achievements and to hear also the um, future ideas that are going up. So thanks everyone who has spoken up, really appreciate it, um.
Yeah, so before we move to the next section, uh, we definitely wanna take a, a mom, a picture of this one amazing meeting. So if, if you're able to turn on your cameras, that would be great. Uh, I'm also sharing again the link to change the virtual background. Um, if you want to use a virtual background, you're welcome to use that as well. Uh, but we would like to take a snapshot of this entire meeting. So I'm just gonna give um, a minute for everybody to be able to turn on your cameras. Oh, nice to see so many of you, great. Hi, I'm in, hi, Kothat, hi, QD, nice to see you. Okay, so I'm setting up everything to take the picture. Just be steady in three, two, one. And one more of the second page, we have two pages of participants, so that's great, three, two, one. Great, I have all uh, the pictures and thank you so much for joining today. Um, for the next section, we're gonna hear about some of the highlights of uh, the learning network in this past year. Uh, so back to you Petra.
Thank you Joel, do you want me to share the screen?
Um, no, I can, I can share this.
So many of you already are very familiar what we're doing in the learning network. And I'm excited to see so many familiar faces. It's really becoming wonderful to, to recognize people from around the world and to use this digital platform to uh, be able to connect and, and link in. So what I would like to just take five to ten minutes today is to highlight some of the progress in twenty twenty-two and look ahead to twenty twenty-three, so next slide Joel. And so you, you all might remember that the, right before the COVID pandemic hit the world, we launched the TB PPM learning network in twenty nineteen in Hyderabad during the union conference. And the aim really was to offer more of a platform where there is a daily interaction, a possibility to talk about PPM, find resources, have a vibrant community where people can find information and find each other. And so that was what we did in twenty twenty, uh, before the pandemic hit. And, and during that, that year, we were actively building a community. And we realized that there was a big amount of interest, um, where we thought maybe we will have two hundred people connecting who are working on PPM. We rapidly got to the thousand people and now three years later, we have over twenty-three hundred people that are interested in the PPM activities and are connected to our platform. So in year two, we focused um, more on some of the knowledge products to really build trackers to um, and get some feature stories and webinars and bu- build the content of uh, what the PPM community is all about. And in year three, sorry, and then, and so now it's time for a new framework. We're looking at twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. We're really thankful to the Billam and In the Gates Foundation for uh, providing us with a new grant to sustain and measure the, uh, to sustain the TB PPM learning network. So next slide Joel. So as part of that um, framework, we, and many of you are already familiar with this framework. But our vision is to provide quality TB care for all people by all providers. And that includes the private providers as well, of course, as a main point of focus for us. And to create a nurture and, and my, and, and dynamic south to south exchange. So as part of that framework, we created this knowledge system where we pull learning in from countries. And um, the focus really, that's where the action is, that's where the implementation is, that's where the PPM experts are. So it's crucial to have the work that you do at the country level, that's the core of our work. What the learning network can help do is to process some of that learning. We write up the feature stories, we, we to help and document in op-eds and in reviews. And then we put some of that information out by exchanges, by, through webinars, a Friday forum and a course and, and field visits. And um, further disseminate the information on PPM in newsletter, social media, global conferences. And finally, that loops then back towards the country where we can actually have a learning exchanges, peer-to-peer exchanges and use the learning from, that we've put into webinars and stories to help the um, work that you're doing to create some additional information uh, for whether it's in policy work or whether it's in implementation of your work to provide some additional input there. So going to the next slide. Um, we've had some really active work done in India and in Nigeria. And I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on each of these, but we will share the slides if you wanna know more. The two country chapters, really India and Nigeria are, have been at the core of our work in twenty twenty-two. There's a lot of active work on implementers uh, at the ground level happening. A relationship building with the national TB programs, um, information groups and WhatsApp groups, um, forums and discussion uh, between implementers have been held in both countries. And both countries have been looking at their um, um, governance activities as well. So um, whereas in India, they're looking now at creating an India-based secretariat that is based um, in, in possibly a university. In Nigeria, there's been a, a lot of work happening on the roadmap and also connection with the Auda Neput group, next slide please. And just to let you know that from the twenty three hundred members, we're really, really pleased to see that there is more than sixty percent of the people that are actually working in southern-based countries um, that are have a high TB burden. Um, so you might all, uh, many of you have collaborated with us on documenting some of the work that you do in feature stories. And we're so pleased to let you know that we have now a wonderful feature storyboard where you can click um, through the different stories online and basically journey in what a private provider or a pharmacy does in a certain country. And if you have project that you would like to feature, please reach out to us because we would love to add it to our journey map. So and have a look at um, at, at the way the feature stories are now presented. Next slide. Um, one of the key things in the area of providing learning that we did in twenty twenty two is we created a course and this was the first course and many of you are alumni of the course. It was a five-day course. We had hundred and forty-five people registered, a lot of interest and an excellent faculty uh, for the five. And we are going to in twenty twenty three hold this online course in a similar format at the McGill Institute. And we're developing um, a, a wide, like a curriculum and everything related to that, based on the lessons of this uh, first year that we did in February. Um, so looking forward to having many of you who haven't been able to join the course, participate. And maybe some of you come back to um, teach in the next course. So next slide, please. Um, we talked about putting information out. So as I said, newsletters and social media. We've also been actively supporting the advocacy work for the global fund. Uh, we also worked on the one for six by twenty four campaign, which is really important that we have shorter regimens available for everyone. And we've been trying to make connections in global conferences to put PPM on the agenda. So um, to have more PPM discussions globally and everywhere. Next slide, Joel. Try to rush through the last ones. Um, and in the work of peer-to-peer work, we have done a lot of uh, wonderful workshop on pharmacy engagement in April in twenty twenty two. And we've together with that group created an infographic that um, pharmacies can use for their engagement with uh, people that come like the do's and don'ts around um, uh, what needs to be happening when people come in with a cough in a pharmacy. And you will hear more about this in um, the next year from us. Excellent. So just as an overview of the key achievements, I've touched upon all of these things, but these here are some of the numbers in terms of people involved. So maybe we can go to the next slide. So next year, we will basically continue with our framework where we work with India and, and Nigeria and on community action and forum discussions. Um, we are having in discussion with Pakistan, Nepal and Kenya, poss- possibly set up a national chapter. Uh, bring this forward as part of the global fund grant as an I, as, as a part of their plan. So this is something where we're happy to collaborate with countries that are interested. Then we're working on new feature stories, pharmacy engagement as part of the processing of learning. We're having um, a new menu of webinars and Friday forums in the works and as I mentioned, the course. And the rest is all continuing some of the work that we're doing. So next slide, Joel. So I'm gonna just the takeaway messages from today. We need energy and ambition to recover TB systems and um, we need urgency in many of the points where there's pushing out of new drug regimens, new diagnostics. It all needs to be available everywhere, including in the private sector. And we need to be loud in the next year. So I wanna just really thank everyone who has been, who is joining here today. And um, for your engagement, for your continuous interest and support in, in the learning network. And Joel, I think I'm handing it back to you now.
Yeah, thanks Petra. So uh, we, I mean, the next few slides, I'm just gonna talk about uh, two recent contests that we concluded and uh, the results of those contests. The first is the photo contest where we got really amazing uh, submissions. It was really difficult for our judges to go through them and uh, submit uh, and uh, decide on a winner. Uh, one of the things that we found interesting was how uh, these health workers and this frontline workers uh, took on more challenges um, to continue TB service uh, during difficult times. We all know about COVID, uh, how it um, get um, like affected um, TB in the past two years. Uh, but apart from that, there were also other challenges uh, like the floods in Pakistan, famine in Afghanistan and the war between uh, Ukraine and Russia. So amidst all these crises, these workers were kind, have continued to uh, provide care and uh, some of these pictures are really uh, demonstrative of that. So you can uh, go through all these pictures on our platform. They are on a news post on our platform. Uh, but I'll just quickly show uh, these images right now. So there were forty submissions in two different categories, high and low, uh, and uh, totally we've selected a six uh, winners from in each of these categories. So these are some of these images. Um. I'm just going to uh, play them one by one. And after this presentation, I can share the link to the new story on our website. So you can have a detailed read about each of these photographs. The next uh, contest that we recently concluded was the active member challenge, uh, which is the community contest where um, on our website, we tracked the activity of um, people uh, who have been at one of our website. We have scored them based on these points, uh, based on the number of posts that they posted on our uh, platform. Uh, the likes uh, and the comments that they shared and if they created an event or a job opportunity. So based on these scoring, uh, we have our top three active members of this year, twenty twenty two. And I'm happy to announce that the three members are Ravindra, uh, Ravindranath, Tom and Michael Macharia. So they are the top three active members of twenty twenty two on our website. So thank you all for being active and huge congratulations to these three for being active. And we uh, hope to see you continue this activity in the coming years. Uh, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. And, and the, the images are so beautiful and I'm really um, congratulate everyone who has been active on our platform. It's wonderful to see. I would now like to ask um, Guy Stalworthy to say a few words. Um, he's one of the key supporters of the learning network and has helped to make it possible that we're also having a new grant to continue the work. Guy, um, we would love to hear from you and hear a few words on um, basically your overall reflections on the learning network and some of the priorities from your point of view for our next year.
Thanks Petra. Um, can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, it's very nice to see these um, these results. And congratulations to all those winners and the most active uh, members. It's really good to see the progress of this network um, over the last three years. And thank you and your team for leading that and also for all the active PPM implementers and researchers and so on, who played such a strong part in the activities. Uh, this is very encouraging and I think it can only go from strength to strength. Um. I've listened with great interest to people's comments about looking back on twenty twenty two and thinking uh, ahead to next year. And um, it's, it's always a good idea to do this exercise and stop and take stock and reflect a little bit. When I um, when I do that about PPM from my point of view, um, not sitting at the country level, but seeing, um, trying to see how this is, how this issue is being driven uh, throughout the high-burdened countries and especially in in the ones with very strong private sectors. I think twenty twenty two was overall a good year, twenty twenty, uh, in the big picture, if we think about the seven highest burden countries with large private sectors. There was about one point one million private notifications just before the pandemic. And in twenty twenty one, we got back to that, to about one point one million. And I don't know the data yet for twenty twenty two, but I'm confident that it's going to exceed that and it'll be the, our best number yet. And so things are going in the right direction. After, as people have said, the recovery from COVID and, and so on. I, I think it's especially impressive to see what's happened in Nigeria, Pakistan and Vietnam. I would call out those three countries as having um, driven PPM forward in very impressive directions uh, into, to new levels and, and, and it's really encouraging to see that. It, we should also mention uh, Myanmar in this respect, and it's nice to see a couple of people from Myanmar on this call. Um, because um, the private sector has, it's been extremely difficult to work in that country for political reasons on top of COVID. And the private sector engagement has con, has sustained and in many cases, been the only source of quality TB care for people i- in what is an extraordinarily protracted crisis for that uh, large, beautiful and important country. Um, so they deserve very special credit and I think, although I'm not too aware of it, I think the same thing could be said in some other countries such as Somalia and Afghanistan, where private providers are, are um, delivering quality TB care in very difficult circumstances. Um. I think some of the challenges uh, we've seen, there are some countries, I would call out Kenya, where PPM is stagnant, actually, not a lot of things seem to be in place, but the numbers don't seem to be changing uh, uh, over time. And maybe there are one or two countries where that's the case. Um. There are some countries uh, where um, notifications are going up, but there's a gap between notification and delivery of meaningful services to patients. And I think about uh, uh, India and Philippines in this respect. And we have to, um, we have to be careful about that and not be too distracted by the notification number. We need to focus on things that are of importance to patients, which is delivery of services, quality services. Um. But anyway, looking but, and then, then the last thing for twenty twenty two, um, some people will have been aware of the progress that's been made on development of the PPM dashboard. Um, it's not complete yet, but we had a, a positive meeting in Nairobi a few weeks ago. And the elements of that is this, it is drawing attention to more meaningful data about PPM than just the notifications. And trying to do that in a way that is consistent across the high-burdened countries so that uh, we can hold ourselves accountable for performance. Um, so looking ahead to twenty twenty three, I mean, people have mentioned this. I think um, the most important thing that I'm looking at is what are we going to do with our global fund designs? Uh, every country is going to be going through uh, preparation of global fund, funding requests in the next several months. And given the importance of the global fund to TB and to TB PPM, this is going to be critical in determining how well we perform for the next three or four years. Um, there is constrained funding. It is not going to be easy. Uh, budgets are flat, allocations are flat, uh, costs have gone up. That means that we have to learn how to do more with either the same amount of money or in some cases, less money. We may not get more money for PPM. We may in some cases, but we can't count on it. Um, I'm going to be looking in particular at the institutional arrangements. Um, we can't do a good job if we don't get the management structure right. And in some cases, um, we don't figure out the arrangement between principal recipients and sub-receipients in a way that maximizes performance. We need to fix that. Um, but overall, we need to figure out how to be better. It's as simple as that, how to do more. And to my mind, that's about uh, being more focused. Uh, being more efficient. Um, keeping a clear focus on the results that matter to patients and the scale. It's not enough to deliver nice results to patients on a small scale. Uh, it's all about um, rising to the challenge and delivering services on a scale commensurate with the size of the private sector. I think that means we're gonna have to, the challenges are very different, of course, in different countries. Uh, I've mentioned India that need to figure, uh, Kenya rather, that needs to figure out how to take private provider engagement to a new level in terms of scale. In India, um, there's this problem of extending meaningful services to all these notified patients and, and sorting out the contracting arrangements. Indonesia and Philippines have different challenges about uh, extending services to primary care rather than just hospitals. Uh, and doing so in a context of very, very complex social health insurance. Pakistan has challenges with digital data systems. Every country's got a different challenge. But I think the common theme across them all is focus on results and being efficient. And we have to not allow ourselves to be distracted by things that don't, that aren't the best use of, best possible use of resources. Uh. There are some things that engage the private sector, but really only serve the rich. We should stop doing that. There are some things that focus on hospitals, late inpatient pair care seeking, and we really need to figure out how to serve people early in their care seeking at primary care. Um, we need to focus on the quality of services and not just the notifications. There are some things at the community level that are nice to do and they feel good, but they may not be the most effective use of resources. There were some active case finding activities that are not, that are not very efficient. And when we do things that are not efficient, we're actually choosing not to serve some other people. That's what we have to say to ourselves. Um, and then I think in PPM, we have a challenge of being drawn in other directions. Active case finding is one of them, which is not always efficient. Uh, I don't know what we do about TPT. There's a, it's hard to do that in PPM efficiently at scale in a way that um, uh, does not become a distraction, although prevention is obviously important. I don't have an easy answer to that. We're gonna have to figure it out, given the pressure to do preventive therapy. Maybe one of the things we need to do is make sure we don't get drawn into too many meetings. That's always a risk. Uh, and uh, we have to focus on getting the job done, getting the results in the field that matter to patients. And time in meetings is time taken away from that. So that's what I'm looking at. Um, I realize we're out of time and I'll stop there. I shouldn't go on for too long. But I, I think just, there's a lot of extremely impressive work happening in some countries. Some other places have got some challenges. And twenty twenty three is gonna be an incredibly important year uh, for the reasons that I mentioned. And I hope the learning network can continue to play a part in that. Thank you, Petra and everybody.
Guy, as always, you're inspiring and putting also our challenges right in front of us. So I really, really appreciate um, all your input and, and uh, thank you so much for keeping us on our toes. I think that's, that's exactly what's needed. We need ambition, people. We need to pull it all together. And um, as Guy has mentioned the word focus several times, I, I really think that in our distracted life with so much social media and meetings, it's really easy to lose that. So I see that Madhu has his hand up. I also know that Carol is with us and Carol opened a meeting in the video where she wasn't with us yet. But I really would like to both give Madhu and Carol uh, a, a final word before we close the meeting. Um, so Madhu, first to you and then uh, Carol, if you wanna say one word, that would be lovely if you can close today's meeting.
No, just a, a quick question for Guy. Guy, are you seeing any uh, hard data that countries are starting to spend less on health? Post-pandemic, so to speak, contrary to what we would have all imagined, that they would have all learned the importance of investing in health. It's actually the, a, expenditure on health is actually decreasing. And if that is the case, what are the consequences for, for TB?
Yeah, I, I, it's a good question, Madhu. I, I have not seen the data. I don't know. It, it's probably gonna be hard to tease out and we may not know for some time. But I think that I think we should not be distracted by those macro issues, frankly, of the high-level meeting, overall global budgets for development assistance, even the global fund replenishment. PPM can get a lot done with a tiny fraction of that. And we just need to be super efficient. We need to worry about whether we're making the best use of the resources we have available to us. If we do that, we will attract uh, resources, even if the overall pie has gone down. Because resources can tend to go to think that produce good results. We have to focus on getting the job done and let the data speak for themselves. And, and, and then we'll, and then we'll be playing our part.
Thank you, Guy. Over to you, uh, Carol. Welcome. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you. And thank you, Petra, for the minute. Hi. So mine is just to end.
So mine is just to emphasize the importance that the voice of TB survivor is how important it is towards the fight of ending TB. You know, just the other day, I was asking myself as a TB survivor, what role am I really playing in the fight against ending TB? You know, I I'm telling myself that I'm not a health expert and there's so many things I don't know along those lines. But I answered myself and said, what TB survivor, I have experienced using my voice to talk about it and then to talk about the interventions. I think would really be important in helping people, thousands of people that are suffering from TB. So as a TB survivor and all the people that are affected with TB, using your voice, talk about awareness, to create awareness, to help in ending stigma is really an important role that all TB survivors are playing around the world. Again, thank you so much, Petra, for the minute. Thank you.
Carol, thank you. You are an inspiration and you are, you know what? You give people hope. You are an example that it is possible to be TB and to live with TB and to be a shining star in helping other people afterwards. I thank you so much for joining today and for speaking up and keep up, keep up, keep speaking up, everyone. We need you loud. And especially next year. So with that, I would like to say we are ending our meeting. We have had wonderful inputs and interactions, and I'm sending many good thoughts to everyone. Thank you for being here. Thank you for joining us today. We will share the recording. We will also write some of the thoughts together in a report and you will receive everything from us so that you can share it with colleagues for anyone who has missed it and would have loved to be part. Please feel free to share the the link and any of the materials that we will be sharing with you. Thank you, everyone. We are wishing you all on behalf of the team and on behalf of everyone, wishing you a wonderful end of 2022. And we are looking forward to being in touch in 2023. And thanks to everyone. You are the ones who are making this network work and happen and vibrant. And I'm so excited to be joining with you today as an example of what we do on a day-to-day basis on a digital frame, on a digital network. So thanks, everyone. See you soon.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Bye. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Bye bye. Thank you.